All right, let's call this work session to order. This work session is called to order. Mr. Trobman, public commentary?
Yes, sir.
None signed up? All right, we're here today. One issue, commissioners, thank you for making some time for this. So forty Texas administrative code, chapter eight fifteen point one three four, which is the marketplace platform rules is up for rule review. There's a very formal process for that. I actually just recently had a fairly significant case under this. But rather than subject it to the whole rule review process. And what I mean by that is just immediately putting out public comment, taking public comment and doing that. I thought we might take this intermediary step or intermediate step to talk through this rule. If there's anything that concerns us about this rule, obviously then we would move to the more formal process. In anticipation of this work session, I did ask the office general counsel to just take a look at the rule. Give us a little bit of information about the background, where we are now, what we've seen, and then what our options are for reviewing this rule. How we might deal with any ambiguities, any things that we might have concerns about relative this rule. How those might be addressed. So if it's okay with you guys, I think what we should do here is I'm going to turn it over to the general counsel. Maybe just talk through the materials that you prepared for us. We don't need a recitation. I mean, you can summarize if you want. But but kind of go through that and then and then hopefully lay out any options we have for looking at this rule and doing a proper review on this rule. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Trobman.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners, Mr. Serna. So course for the record, Les Trobman, general counsel. Joining me this afternoon is Eric Holwin, unemployment insurance division director, Sergio Lopez, director of tax, and Nelson Kerr, also the office of general counsel. So as you're aware, section two oh one point zero four one of the Texas Unemployment Compensation Act defines employment and empowers the commission to determine whether a person's performance of a service is free from control and direction of an entity under contract or in fact, such that the person is not in employment but rather an independent contractor. In two thousand and nineteen, with the growth of the use of the marketplace platform model in various sectors of the economy, TWC proactively promulgated rules in order to provide some clarity to those who might seek to operate within a marketplace platform framework. So those rules are in forty Texas administrative code, section eight fifteen point one thirty four. Specifically, B two contains a nine-part test and dictates that an entity which meets these factors will be considered a marketplace platform and workers providing services through the platform are to be considered independent contractors. Since this time, TWC has had the opportunity to assess specific models under the nine-part test through two tax department audits and an additional nine appeal proceedings. So while this volume relatively speaking is low, this five-year anniversary, the rule review process presents a good opportunity for the commission to take a look at the agency's experience to date and assess areas of policy clarification, which might be valuable as the marketplace platform business model continues to expand into novel areas of the Texas economy. So Sergio is going to provide an overview of the agency's application of the marketplace platform rules today and some trends that we're seeing. Sergio?
Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Serna, for the record, Sergio Lopez, director of tax. Our UI tax team has a long history of evaluating employment status, that is employee or independent contractor. An individual is assumed to be employment unless evidence finds otherwise. An investigation under the marketplace platform, which UI tax only has investigated two instances to date, could come up through a regular tax audit or a wage investigation in response to an unemployment claim. Now, a wage investigation occurs when an individual applies for unemployment compensation and believes there are missing wages from an employer. Now, regardless of the investigation, the UI tax team starts to starts by determining whether the individual is an independent contractor and free from control under the twenty common law factors in the Texas administrative code eighty-two, eight-two-one-point-five. So depending on the type of business and the services performed, not all twenty common law factors may apply. In addition, the weight assigned to a specific factor may vary depending on the facts of the case. So if an individual is found to be employment, not an independent contractor, the investigation will stop. When a business entity states that they are a marketplace platform and the individual is a marketplace contractor, UI tax will investigate under eight-one-five point one three four. Now, the first step is to determine whether the business entity operates under and meets the three conditions as a marketplace platform. If the entity is found not to operate as a marketplace platform, the investigation will stop. The second step is whether the services performed meet any of the five exclusion exclusion conditions. This involves understanding the definitions of an exclusion such as professional employer organizations, temporary employees, and temporary health firms, as defined under Texas Labor Code nine-one-point-zero-zero-one and two-zero-one-point-zero-one-one. Now, if any of the five exclusions conditions are met, the investigation stops. Now, the third and final step is to determine whether the individual meets all nine conditions as a marketplace contractor. Now, unlike the twenty common law factors, where only a portion needed to be met, all nine of the marketplace contractor conditions must be met. Now, since the rule was amended in two thousand and nineteen to include marketplace, the UI tax department has conducted two marketplace investigations. In both cases, the individuals were determined not to be marketplace contractors under two conditions. Condition A, that substantially all of their payment was not on a per job or transaction basis. And condition G, that the individual was not responsible for providing their own tools, materials, and equipment to perform the services. If the individual is bound to not meet all nine marketplace contractor conditions, the investigation will stop. And that's just a quick overview.
So commissioners, as you're discussing these trends and the potential areas for clarification, we would suggest that your direction take the form of multiple staff actions. First off, we would recommend that you would direct staff to prepare some sort of guidance memorandum to bring back before y'all for your consideration and ratification. And then additionally, we would suggest that the commission direct staff to explore future rulemaking to codify any guidance that you eventually endorse. So with that, we're available for questions which you might have.
Okay, we'll just open this up then to questions for general counsel and general discussion. So questions for the general counsel.
I don't have questions.
Comments? Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely. So let's, Mr. Trevino, let's just move to commentary. Let us make our comments and then if there's discussion, we'll engage in that discussion.
Well, I think it's important for staff to continue evaluating marketplace platforms based on the nine-factor test, which require all nine conditions to be met in order for workers to be considered independent contractors. The nine-factor test acts as clarification for staff to determine if the marketplace platform rules apply. Even if the marketplace contractor exceptions hasn't been met, the twenty-factor common law test is still applicable to determine if the individual qualifies as an independent contractor. If we adjust the nine-factor test to balancing test, rather than requiring all nine conditions to be met, it will substitute our rule for the common law twenty-factor test for determining employment status.
For the record, so to put to record our points, we believe the first inquiry in a potential marketplace platform case is whether the alleged employer qualifies as a marketplace platform. First items to be excluded would be whether the entity is really a temporary health firm, as defined under Texas Unemployment Compensation Act or as a PEO under chapter ninety-one of the Texas Labor Code. If either of those is true, then the inquiry would shift to the twenty-factor test. Otherwise, the inquiry would shift to whether the worker is a marketplace contractor. For more addressing hourly pay, we should distinguish between hourly pay that is incidental to the gig being offered, i.e. the other. So either the offer is focused on a shift day or other specific period, and the offer is for the shift's worth of pay. In which the case, the hour, in which case the hourly rate is secondary, as opposed to a job of intermediate duration paid an hourly rate. This is important because the majority of the workers in gig economy are looking for predictable gig opportunities requiring predictable predictable amounts of time that they can work into their activities without too much trouble. Moving on to supervision and equipment, we should distinguish between supervision and equipment requirements imposed by third parties or governmental agencies and supervision and equipment requirements imposed by the alleged employer. In other words, the situation with supervision or equipment are supplied to comply with the law would be different from one in which the company supplies those things in for its own benefit and convenience. Regarding training, we should distinguish between project-specific training or training unrelated to the work and training that is necessary for the worker to know how to perform the work in question. The former is frequently found in specialized projects and clients and is more in the category of orientation where the latter is typical of employees who would be unqualified to hold themselves out as independent contractors under any normal tests. We do not agree that the first inquiry should be whether the worker qualifies as employee under the twenty-factor test. Twenty-factor test would be relevant if the inquiry shows that the worker does not qualify as a marketplace contractor. That concludes the props I have through the record.
You know, I would say along the same lines, you know, I think we have a limited amount of cases that we've been through, but it's been five years.
Two and five years?
Two, well, more than that. Two that came as a tax investigation. Some others came relative to either UI or some wage issues or something like that. It's a little under a dozen, I think, during the five years.
Through the appeal process.
Yeah, so eleven, eleven total cases. But here's my point. There are some specific issues that continue to come up. I think Commissioner Trevino's point about the twenty-factor test and where it is relative to our rules. Yeah, I don't think anything that we're talking about today would move toward your concerns. Yeah, I think I still see this framework where the twenty-factor test, which is really just a part of our rules. It's it's something that's been there for a long time. We use it. It's effective for us. That's really not what we're talking about today. This this rule put on the books in two thousand and nineteen. I think, as far as it makes an excellent point, once the determination is made that it's not a temporary employment firm, it's not a PEO. We were being asked to do this test, so we do this test. I do also appreciate the idea that that all of the factors have to be met for you to pass that particular test. A concern, I have three specific concerns that I have, which will mirror Commissioner Sparsas are. One, the idea that the an hourly rate which you offer through the platform is accepted by whomever is procuring the service through the platform, that hourly rate could still be kind of a gig basis. For example, a plumber comes to your house, they're just as likely to charge you by the hour as anything else to try to figure out what the problem is. If you engage with an attorney, they do in fact bill by the hour. You you might engage with, you know, I'm thinking about things like other types of machine repair technicians. There's also the thing about IT services to troubleshoot a problem where they don't exactly know what they're looking for. They might be charged by the hour, and no one would contend that these types of engagements are an employment engagement. You've hired someone to perform service, they come in and perform that service. I don't think we're disputing the independent contractor nature of that. However, I am seeing through the application of this rule, I'm seeing instances where where it's not quite as clear-cut, because it's not a traditional job, it's a new job. You know, we want to see that that payment being on the nature of a specific completion or some aspect of the gig work, and we've not to date really been willing to recognize hourly work as part of that. And I think I think we can point to a lot of types of engagements where being paid by the hour would not necessarily convey some type of employment relationship. I think I think you more or less spoke to that, which is there are lots of different ways for someone to get paid and getting paid by the hour doesn't necessarily negate your ability to say that, hey, I'm working on a gig basis through a platform, maybe multiple platforms, and I'm doing these things in addition to my other job or other things that I might be working on. Second point, which also mirrors Commissioner Sparsas, is unconditional G, the provision of tools, materials, and equipment. I think we're seeing instances where entities will own certain types of tools or equipment where the either the regulatory ownership of that is so onerous that a larger entity owns that. And here I'm thinking of things like, I think certainly some medical equipment, X-ray machines and other things that are heavily regulated. MRIs, I think we want these things heavily regulated, but it may very well be that the technicians working on those are contracted. Because the ability to work on that is also dependent on state licensure, and you can bring him to do that. But I can think of other jobs that would be very similar, crane operators, the large cranes we see around town. Often, those are contract crane operators. It is not their crane. That crane has in fact been leased by yet a third company. And and but we don't consider that crane operator necessarily to be in the employment of someone. They're an independent contractor, the general contractor as employed. I was thinking in terms of pilots, I'm talking about ship pilots in our ports. They certainly don't own the container ship or the cruise ship that they drive from the pass into the dock. And in fact, many of them work actually for a subdivision of the state, but they're contracted by those entities who use them. So we see instances where we know independent contractors very well may work on equipment that someone else owns, but that that should not impede on their independent contractor status. And it typically doesn't when we see it as a more traditional independent contractor engagement. I think that the gig economy and the different types of platforms that we see create more opportunities for people to do that. You know, I'm thinking in terms of, if I'm thinking of like medical professionals, where you work at one hospital, but you want to pick up extra shifts, you might do that through some gig network because you don't want or can't have an employment relationship. You need to do this on an independent basis. And so, again, if we're talking about equipment, if you're an X-ray technician, you know, we don't want to impede your ability to hold down your full-time X-ray technician and perhaps work as an independent contractor on the side, which brings me to my third point. It's about condition H, which is the control of methods of service. And and I will admittedly, I have I have done additional research and changed my view on this one a little bit. I think there are a number of instances where the state requires some specific licensure. And that specific licensure requires either the supervision of or the supervision from another state license. There would be instances in the medical fields where you would see this. There are some instances where teachers are required to have certain certifications to provide supervision. You'll see this with peace officers. There are a number of examples from state, both law and regulation, where regulatory bodies require a specific licensure. And the licensure uses the word supervised, but it's only for the basis of the license. In other words, they're not necessarily the boss, but if you look at a medical relationship, nurses would operate off of a chart that a doctor has prepared, which means any nurse could operate off of any chart that any licensed physician prepared. There are other types of medical professionals, but specifically looking at that, the law says specifically supervision, but there doesn't have to be an employment relationship between that nurse and that physician, neither of whom may work for the hospital in which they're operating, because that's just simply the marketplace that we live in these days. And so if we look at those three areas, if we look at condition A, payment, if we look at condition G, provision of tools, material, and equipment, and condition H, control of methods of service. You know, I think five years ago, when we went through this, I think we thought we probably knew a lot about the marketplace, and we did. I would submit that in the last five years, technology has changed a lot about a lot of marketplaces. And as we get additional facts online, you know, I think we owe it to Texas to continue to just look at what that means for the marketplace and whether or not we're letting people actually exercise their freedom to do the things they want. Now, it is a fair point. You know, I think statutorily, it would appear to me that the state of Texas says you're in employment unless proven otherwise. I think that's a fair point. I'm certainly not arguing that point. The statute that says that also says that honestly, you're in an employment unless to the satisfaction of the commission that you can prove that you're not in employment. All right, so the three commissioners ultimately would decide that. We always have the ability to set up other entities, which we've done with the way we do tax reviews and audits and different things that we've done. We've exercised our authorities to do that. So I think as the marketplace continues to evolve, I think it's incumbent on us to just always be looking at the mechanisms that we've set in place to do that. And when we look at condition A, condition G, and condition H, I'm not necessarily seeing the need to change the rule at this point. I think probably what would benefit a whole lot of staff that are working on this throughout the agency is if there was a way, and I don't, I'm asking, if there's a way for us to just prepare a document that kind of represents the the majority will of the commission on how we view what these policies mean. It is also by statute, staff's responsibility to carry out those policies. Our responsibility ends at such time as we've enumerated our policy and what we believe that policy to mean. And at that point, it becomes the executive director's responsibility to carry that out. And I I'm suggesting that is there a mechanism by which we can issue some written clarification of where we are, much like an order of the commission? We would probably want to vote on that in open meeting, I think. I think that's probably the most proper way to handle that. Is that is that is that a possibility? Is that something that we could do?
You know, I think as a vehicle it is. I do think that depending on the types of specific changes we're talking about, it may be prudent to follow that up with an intent to codify in our rules. Because there will be some, some, there are gray areas, and I do think that there's enough gray area, certainly when we're talking about A and G, to to provide that further explanation on how we interpret, you know, the per job and the hourly component, as well as tools that may be, you know, not legally or practically, you know, provided by by a worker. But but I do think that in the short term, I do think that the commission adopting a guidance memorandum that is provided publicly facing is a vehicle that could be explored.
You know, and I think I think as we approach this, just us being cognizant of the fact that marketplace is going to be changing. There very well may come a day when something's either antiquated and no longer applicable. I don't think we're at that point now. I don't, that's why I'm really thinking, if we can clarify what these rules mean, you know, I think we save a lot of trouble of going through a rulemaking and only end up exactly where we are right now. I don't want to preclude that if that's what's necessary, but I think here it's just us acknowledging that in five years, the marketplace actually has continued to shift, technology has continued to drive things in a different direction. People have a lot more choices for different types of revenue generation than they've ever had. And and you see people engage in lots of different combinations. There's, I don't think it's an unusual scenario where someone may engage in employment and at the same time engage in gig work, either outside their employment hours, on the weekends, whatever the case may be. And I don't want to put people's ability to do either one of those things in jeopardy. It goes without saying, you know, the commission also has a responsibility to ensure that employers are acting in good faith in the marketplace. I think there is somewhat of an enforcement concern here. And I don't think us doing this type of clarification memorandum in any way impedes our ability to address our efforts to ensure employers continue operating in good faith. And then, you know, people, hopefully they'll maintain their freedoms to do what they feel they can do, certainly within the confines of the law to earn some kind of money for themselves and their family, right? So I think we're trying to strike some balance here and just recognize the realities of the marketplace, which is there will be at times things that seem more ambiguous than rules that we put in place twenty-five, thirty years ago. That's probably true. And so taking an opportunity to clarify that here with a rule that's five years old, that was an attempt to clarify those same rules. I don't think that's a bad thing. Gentlemen, I don't want to monopolize the conversation if there's other thoughts or concerns. Certainly, I think we should probably at least get that on the table now, because I think where I'm headed is is we're going to ask the general counsel's office to start preparing the basis of this memorandum in an attempt to bring this back to the commission for a vote during one of our regular scheduled commissions.
What's the timeframe on? Are we at a deadline?
We don't have any, we don't have any particular deadline. If we're going to do some kind of rulemaking, we probably need to get that initiated by mid-July if we're really going to kind of get that wrapped up before the legislative session starts, which would everybody would want. So if we think we have to move to rulemaking in July, if not, I think we have the summer to get this done. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I think and starting a rulemaking in July would, you know, it would be running into the late fall just anticipated the way that rulemaking of this nature might might go, so.
There will be a lot of public comment.
Yeah.
But certainly, you know, again, we would, we would, we were pursuing the guidance memorandum type of vehicle. We would recognize that rulemaking will follow, you know.
But not this year.
But not this year.
Perhaps at a later time.
We would be able to gain the benefit, of course, not only of this guidance memorandum being out there, but.
Well, who knows, there may very well be legislative work on this. We don't, you know, I think that's safe to say that there are a number of interested parties in this, and they may choose to go take their concerns to the legislature, which that's how the constitution in this state works. So there may be things coming out of the legislative session that we'll want to consider as well. So maybe this memorandum kind of puts us in a position to do that, understand where we are, see what the legislature chooses to do, and then come back maybe next summer in a better position to do that kind of rulemaking. Yeah, okay.
I understand. I like the guidance memo on future rulemaking guidance that we could call it on. Yeah, my only question, I think, was the timing of it was was to clarify on the order of the issue whether whether or not we we issue a rule or a rule, we submit that legislature basically codifies it, and then do we we adjust from there again after after, if legislation is passed and adopted? We just, obviously, we follow, but we also serve as a resource for that, too. So I think that's what we're providing as the resource, kind of the expert points.
So we're clarifying a rule we already passed for the benefit of our staff. You know, certainly, we're obviously doing that in daylight, because that's the way, that's the best way to do it, frankly. Staff will use that. I think it does clarify the commission's position on a five-year-old rule. If the legislature decides they're interested in this and there is legislation on this, you're right, will be a resource on that. I think where that brings us is whether the legislature does or doesn't take this issue up. Next summer, we'll come back around to this issue. We'll see if our guidance memorandum has in fact clarified what I think all of us feel like might be some murky ground, and then we'll know the need for additional rulemaking at that point. I see prudence in waiting to see what the legislature chooses to do, solely because. Solely because if they do, then we just have to start rulemaking all over again. At least in this way, I think we can address an issue. Our issues were the same. Christopher Trevino had some additional concerns that I think can be clarified. And I think we can solve the issue for our staff, kind of understanding what we believe this rule means. And then it's not really kicking the can down the road. It's positioning us better next summer to deal with that, both that and whatever legislative action may or may not that takes place.
In terms of timeframe, we'll certainly, staff will be prepared to, you know, get work immediately and, you know, certainly the next couple of months here.
So, so something like this will not be open to public comment. There's not, there's not a process for that. And, but I would anticipate that each commission office may very well receive communication from interested parties, whether they be businesses, maybe some marketplace platforms, maybe some business associations in the state. I've heard from several people on this issue. I would assume that it's up to each individual office as they work with their various constituencies to incorporate those thoughts into our daily work, which is, which is part of our responsibility to stay as well. It will not be posted for public comment on the website or anything like that. So if, if the public wants some direct access, public wants it, I'm your guy, you know, if employers want it, or if labor folks want to comment on this, I assume they can go through their commissioners. But also you can write the whole commission anytime you want to. So there's lots of ways to communicate with us, and there's lots of entry points over this agency. Is, am I understanding that part correctly?
No, absolutely. And I think that when you, when we do bring this to y'all in an open meeting, there'll be the opportunity, as there always is, to provide you comment at that time. The commissioners are bringing forward for y'all to discuss variations on what staff puts together. Obviously, there's the opportunity to have comments before you, before you take any sort of action there.
Okay, great. So there will be, there'll be an opportunity for direct public input. That's good. That's what I wanted to hear. All right. Any, any other comments, concerns?
Not for me. Okay, I can leave it right now.
All right. Everybody's good? All right. Let's entertain a motion to adjourn this work session.
Chairman, I move we adjourn this work session.
So, to adjourn, thank you all.